...called in session. Jim, I guess you're up.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, members of the City Council. Tonight, we're joined by four members of the King County Metro staff. We've been working with them pretty extensively over the last year on several transit initiatives. They're going to have a presentation tonight that starts with a little bit about an overview of what, how they're implementing the Metro Connects, the Metro Long Range Plan, and then getting into the specifics of what's going on here in Renton as far as projects that they're coordinating. Tonight, we're going to be joined by Deanna Martin. She's the Partnerships and Engagement Manager for King County Metro. Also Greg McKnight is here. He's the Rapid Ride I Line Project Manager. That would be the second I Line that will be implemented in the city of Renton. We also have Malkovich Blackovich, who is the Senior Planner for the Connecting Transit Team. And finally Jeremy Victor, who is the South King County Lead for Service Planning. And with that, I'll turn it over to Metro staff.
Want to sit right up here?
Sure. Great. Thank you so much. So my name is not Deanna Martin. We, my name is Lauren Craig, and we thought we were on the agenda a little bit later. My supervisor will be here shortly, but I will kick it off for absence so we can, for the sake of time. Thank you. So what we wanted to do tonight was give you a little bit of a perspective, including our project updates for the partnerships that we're currently co-creating in Renton. We wanted to make sure that we kind of provided an overview of how this all fits within Metro's strategy and sort of our ongoing restructure and sort of our strategy for service and infrastructure investments in Renton and get feedback from you tonight as well. So let's start. I do not have my, I do not have her notes, but we will, you know, you're familiar with Metro Connects, which is our long-range plan, and that is sort of a vision for investment throughout the county that will go through 2040. And with regard to service planning and investments in Renton, that's sort of an ongoing process that we've been working with your staff to accomplish through the Renton Transit Access Study as well as ongoing service planning and investments and community outreach in Renton. So Metro Connects is Metro's adopted long-range vision. As you know, it identified a network of high-capacity transit throughout King County. It's a vision. It's not set in stone, but we hope that it does kind of provide that guidance and infrastructure long-term. It's an integrated transportation system connecting people and places, and it's shaped by input on an ongoing basis from cities, passengers, transportation agencies, businesses, and other stakeholders. We are getting to Metro's long game by planning for an integrated mobility network, and that includes fixed route service, alternative methods of service, as well as infrastructure investments. And that, how that manifests overall with regard to Metro in King County, we thought we'd provide kind of that background, then we can kind of talk a little bit more about how that is manifesting in Renton. So Metro's long game began with a process called D2D. You may have heard us present on it before, and that's Metro becoming a department from being a division within King County, which means that it's kind of a standalone agency with its own planning processes and its own leadership. So that is during this D2D process, we identified four pillars that provides the foundation for everything that we do at King County, or everything we do at King County Metro. And that's accessibility, building things, partnerships, and workforce. And that sits upon a foundation of our policy and principles, which includes equity and social justice, which is our driving force, and that's kind of an ongoing basis. We're continuing to identify how we can further equity and social justice in our communities. Safety is a priority, sustainability. And then that leads to us becoming a mobility agency. And you'll see the icons kind of floating around the King County Metro logo, and that includes, as I mentioned, fixed route service, other forms of service, first mile, last mile, van pools, bikes, car share, pedestrian infrastructure, and so on and so forth. And that, in order to become a mobility agency, what we have to do is sort of an, we call it the virtuous circle. And that is demonstrating Metro's value is critical to us, and that's kind of through our partnerships and through our ongoing relationship building with jurisdictions, with our partners, with employers, with community. We are dedicated to continuing to demonstrate Metro's value, which will then lead to growing capacity. And then we will measure our progress consistently and constantly on an ongoing basis, which will then lead us to demonstrate more value. We want to hire and train and grow our workforce. We want that to be done, you know, with cost, quality, safety, and equity in mind on a consistent basis. And then the long game will hopefully by 2040, which is when Metro Connects sort of, what Metro Connects goes, the year it goes until, is healthy communities, thriving economy, and a sustainable environment. And that's our long game for the county, for the region. There's 5.3 million people in this region. We have 1 million daily trips and 6.5 million hours of service by 2040. Our 2019 to our 2020 priorities, as you know, are bus-based expansion, South County, building workforce, wellness centers, new service guidelines, which are being developed on an ongoing basis, and regional coordination. We have seven Rapid Ride Lines. As you know, you will receive a Rapid Ride I Line update tonight. And Sound Transit expansion and integration from 2021 to 2024, which is, we are continuing to partner with Sound Transit on an ongoing basis. So we are, as I mentioned, becoming a mobility agency. And as a value-driven, data-supported mobility agency, we will develop a regional mobility ecosystem with transit at the center and complementary shared mobility services. We seek to provide seamless, multimodal mobility solutions, and that includes infrastructure investments that support our service, lower number of vehicles, vehicle miles traveled, congestion, and energy use. And this will lead us to become as safe, sustainable, and equitable as we possibly can. We may have, we've, I think, provided presentations in the past that talk about how we are, what is equity? You know, this word is used a lot. And to us, determinants of equity include access to health and human services, healthy built and natural environments, quality education, family wage jobs and job training, early childhood development, economic development, strong vibrant neighborhoods, affordable, safe, quality housing, access to parks and natural resources, equity in county practices throughout the agency, access to affordable, healthy, and local food, an equitable law and justice system, community and public safety, and last but not least, access to safe and efficient transportation. And what that means, you know, it sounds very good. What it means is that we are consistently revising our policies and our practices and how we partner with local communities and local jurisdictions to continue to invest where needs are greatest, and that's going to be an ongoing process. And with that, I will bring up our Service Planning Lead in South King County to talk about service planning and implementation in Renton.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jeremy Victor. I'm the South King County Lead in our Service Planning Group. I just wanted to provide a brief introduction to the remainder of the presentation, which will focus on specific actions that Metro is taking in Renton to pursue our long game as well as the vision expressed in Metro Connects, namely mobility projects as well as capital improvements and other improvements to improve access to transit. Mobility projects are opportunities for Metro to work with the community, with partners, and with other stakeholders to reshape the transit network. Mobility projects in Renton are triggered by high-capacity transit investments, including a new Rapid Ride Line as well as the new Sound Transit, Bus Rapid Transit Line in the I-405 corridor. We're looking to restructure the fixed route network while also making changes and integrating complementary flexible services to create basically an all-day two-way network that helps to get people where they're going, improves access to transit, improves access to jobs and other destinations that people are trying to reach. We have a project that's in the works right now you'll be hearing a little bit more about. That's the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan. That is a project that is closely coordinated with the Rapid Ride I Line planning effort. And in fact, one of the goals of that project is to create a new route that will follow the Rapid Ride alignment between Auburn, Kent, and Renton. We're also, as part of that effort, looking to make other changes to the network to improve access to destinations. Another mobility project you'll be hearing a little bit more about is related, again, to the Sound Transit BRT service. We'll be looking to integrate and make additional changes in Renton in conjunction with the implementation of that new route as well. The changes that we'll be making are informed by Metro Connects, but we'll also be doing extensive engagement with the community, with stakeholders, with partners. As you heard, we've been working with Renton as part of the I Line and Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan projects, and we'll continue to do so throughout the duration of that project. We're also really increasingly focused in equity in the work that we do. We're focused in equity in terms of how we conduct public engagement as well as on the outcomes of the changes that we're making. So we are really focused on engaging with people of color, people with lower incomes, people for whom English is not their primary language. And as we're considering potential changes to the network, we're really increasingly focused on outcomes for those same folks. So you'll be hearing a little bit more about the Rapid Ride I Line project. You'll be hearing a little bit more about the Access to Transit project in Renton. Ultimately, the goal of these efforts is to improve ridership in order to really achieve those key outcomes that are identified in Metro's long game, namely healthy communities, thriving economy, and a sustainable environment. But before we get into that, I am really pleased to inform you about some improvements to the transit network that are coming in September 2019, so right around the corner. Metro regularly monitors and evaluates our system in order to identify potential improvements to the network, and we make investments as resources are available. We have, in fact, identified some improvements in Renton consistent with that process. So among those are additional service on the Route 101, which is your trunk route to downtown Seattle. We will be extending the span of service by two hours on that route seven days a week. So that route will now operate until about 1:00 a.m., so really improving transit accessibility for people who are trying to commute a little bit later in the day. Route 105 is the Renton Highlands to downtown route that also serves Renton Technical College. We'll be improving the frequency on that route on Sundays from every 60 minutes to every 30 minutes. Route 107 is a route that goes between Beacon Hill and Renton via Skyway and Rainier Beach. We're making some schedule changes to that one and also adding one trip. And then finally, the Route 906 is a route that connects Fairwood with Chakula via Valley Medical Center. We'll be improving that route to operate every 30 minutes during the peak period. It's currently every hour. So those are improvements that are coming since September of this year. And with that, I will turn it over to my colleague Greg McKnight, who will tell you a little bit more about the Rapid Ride I Line. Thank you.
Good evening. As Jeremy said, my name is Greg McKnight. I am with King County Metro. I'm the Rapid Ride I Line Project Manager. And I have a few slides before I get into the meat of that project. As my colleagues have alluded to, we really have been focused on what our long game is. And one of the things that Lauren mentioned was some new Rapid Ride investment coming in. We've heard that Rapid Ride is one of our most recognizable features of Metro. We get a lot of very good comments on it. It has a lot of increased ridership, and that Metro Connects vision wanted us to continue investing in that service. So we have a few upcoming Rapid Ride Lines that we are in the works on planning to complement the Rapid Ride A through F that are out on the street today. The Rapid Ride F Line serving Renton over to Burien. We have the Rapid Ride H Line that will be starting service in 2021 that'll serve the Burien to downtown Seattle through the Del Ridge Corridor. Then the Rapid Ride G Line, which is a partnership with the City of Seattle, serving downtown Seattle through the Madison Corridor to the Madison Valley. And then in 2023, we have the Rapid Ride I Line, which I'll talk about in a little more detail, that will serve Renton, Kent, and Auburn. And then a few more after that. In 2024, we have two more partnerships with the City of Seattle for a line that goes between downtown Seattle and the Rainier neighborhood down to Rainier Beach. And then also from downtown north through the Eastlake U District and Roosevelt neighborhoods. Both of those are expected to be delivered in 2024. In 2025, we have an east side line between Totem Lake in Kirkland through East Gate in Bellevue. And then we do have one additional line identified in our long-range planning of funding packages that's scheduled to be delivered in 2027, but that is a little farther out, and so we haven't identified the exact line that will be. But it's most likely prioritizing a line in either the eastern part of King County or the southern part. So what is, what does a Rapid Ride investment look like? We have Rapid Ride out on the street for about a decade now. Rapid Ride has always been where we've been investing in our newest technologies and really pushing the envelope of what we can provide for our customers. So one of the things that we are really excited about is some of the passenger facilities that come with that. The next kind of round of Rapid Ride, we've actually been looking at what that could look like. And we actually have a new shelter design that we're going to be using, starting on our Rapid Ride H Line, that will also be used on the I Line here in Renton. So getting a little brand refresh in that sense. A lot of those capital investments go towards accessibility. We really pride ourselves on making sure that people can get to and from the bus safely. So it's one of the things we really look at in these investments. And then also speed and reliability. We like to find strong partnerships with our city partners to really get the bus moving through some congested areas. The City of Renton has been a great partner on the Rapid Ride F Line to have some transit priority on the Rainier Corridor that the Rapid Ride F Line, as well as many other metro buses, have the availability to get past some of those queues that form through the peak periods on that roadway. So a lot of our planning work tries to find some of those other wins that we can partner with the cities on to get some transit priority, to get people moving out of that congestion. Some of the other things we look at investment on is communications and technology. A lot of our stations will have real-time information out there telling people when the next bus is coming, so it's a lot easier for people to just show up and go. They don't have to necessarily rely on a schedule that the bus they know is coming on a regular basis, and it's usually not going to be late because of some of those other speed and reliability investments that we had done. And then we also take a lot of other aspects into consideration as we're looking for those dollars to invest, things like safety, comfort, and security. Lighting at stations is something that we prioritize. We want to make sure that the people using our service feel safe and secure to do so. That's something that we're constantly working on and definitely in strong partnership with our city jurisdictions to identify some of those needs and make sure that we can invest our dollars in the right ways. And then I think the last bullet here I mentioned earlier of access to transit, and that'll come up again later in the presentation here when I turn it over to my colleague. But one of the goals of the Rapid Ride program is to make sure people have safe connections to the bus. It's one thing to build a nice station with a nice shelter at it, but if the sidewalk ends three feet after the shelter and nobody can actually get there without making an unsafe crossing of a street or walking out in a travel lane, that's not something we want to really invest in. So we have a desire to make sure that we can get people to and from the bus safely. So a little more detail on the Rapid Ride I Line. As I mentioned, we are looking at a start of service in September 2023 for this line. This is a north-south Rapid Ride Line that will serve Renton, Kent, and Auburn. It is currently served by Routes 169 and Route 180. Route 169 serves the Renton Transit Center down to the Kent Transit Center. And then the Route 180 is actually a longer route, but a portion of it is what we're looking to convert into a Rapid Ride Line between Kent and Auburn. There's about 6,000 daily riders on this corridor. It's one of our higher productivity corridors within the county. One of the reasons this line was prioritized for investment earlier in that investment process of deciding which lines we would be getting to earlier from that Metro Connects vision. We are looking at about $120 million in capital investments. So what does that $120 million go toward? This is for those speed and reliability improvements, looking at maybe we can move some lanes around. Maybe we might reconfigure some intersections to help move the bus through a little faster, improvements like that. Then also improvements like with the station amenities, so building the shelters and the lighting and the real-time information signs. And then also some of those access to transit projects. So we might be having a great station location, but there's not really a safe crossing of the arterial. So we might use some of that money to work with the city on putting in a safe pedestrian crossing of a street. Or maybe a bit of sidewalk is missing a block away from a transit stop that could actually create a much larger walk shed for people that could maybe get to the station a little easier if we were able to build a little bit of sidewalk. So that's a lot of what that money is going toward. That money is not toward our fleet. That's from another budget. And then also the actual service hours that will be required to actually operate the service. That is not included in this. So this is just for that investment in things that we will be out there building in the next few years. So some of that money, we are hoping to partner with the FTA on a competitive small starts grant. So that is a grant cycle that we are hoping to submit for next summer, summer/fall, and that we are hoping for about $60 million from the FTA on this project. So we will be working to have a very competitive grant for that. And we are already working very closely with Jim and others here at the city on making sure that we can identify what that project looks like and make sure that we have a very competitive grant application next year. So some of those other major milestones, we're in planning. We're going to work toward that small starts grant submitted next year, get into our design phase, construction starting in probably 2021, '22, with a start of service in September 2023. So Jeremy also mentioned some of the other compatible projects that are happening at the same time. Since we have this large investment coming in for Rapid Ride and looking at this corridor a little closer, we thought it was a good idea that we could also kind of take a step back and look at the larger network. There hadn't been a lot of service changes in this part of the county in quite some time. And so there was a desire that we should maybe see if we can make sure that we can build this Rapid Ride I Line corridor with good service to and from it. So this is where the Renton-Kent-Auburn Area Mobility Plan kind of coalesced with the Rapid Ride I Line planning to happen at the same time. So some of the goals of that project are to increase the network efficiencies and invest in our equity priority populations, as Jeremy mentioned earlier, and then develop a full suite of mobility services. So this is more than just fixed routes. This is those first and last mile solutions. This is van pools. This is some of the other services that are mobility services as a mobility agency can help deliver. So really trying to take that holistic look at what is the right type of service for the right communities. And that may or may not be fixed route depending on what those needs are. The last goal of the project at this phase is to create that single route between Renton, Kent, and Auburn to serve those major destinations like the Sounder Stations and the Valley Medical Center and the transit centers along the way. So one of the goals of that project is to create that line, and that would be in anticipation of that Rapid Ride investment a few years later. So as you can see on the slide, this is on a little faster timeframe. Right now, we're in the outreach and plan development phase. So we're out in the public, talking to people. We are working very closely with technical staff here at Renton, figuring out what those needs are, figuring out how we can best address some of the needs and barriers that we're hearing. And that will lead into a service change ordinance that we run through our process with the King County Council, and then moving toward a September 2020 implementation of that changed network. So that's a little faster, and that will be able to see some of those ideas for change online just about a year from now. So this is just a little overview of kind of where we are in that timeline. We did a needs assessment phase through March through May that involved kind of understanding what the existing network looks like, getting some of that early information down. And then we, which also involved outreach and engagement with the technical staff here at Renton as well as the larger area that that mobility plan can touch. So we've had, right now, we're in our concept development. So we took those needs that we heard, those barriers, and started to see if there's anything that we can use in our toolbox to help start addressing those things. So that might be additional meeting needs for service later at night or not having adequate service on a Sunday, or maybe there's overcrowding on certain routes or certain areas that don't have good connections. So we're taking all of that information and really developing some of those concepts. That does involve going out and talking to members of the community again, and then also engaging with the technical staff here at Renton and the other jurisdictions. So one of the things we wanted to present on today is since we have kind of finished that first needs assessment phase, we wanted to do a quick kind of report out on what we heard and how we talked to people. So first, how did we reach people? We knew going into this project that some of the older ways of doing engagement wouldn't necessarily work with the communities we really wanted to talk to, going back to our goals of having an equitable process and talking to the priority populations that we're really trying to serve. So instead of having a regular public meeting on a Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. that you have to be at or you don't get to talk to anyone, we decided that wasn't necessarily the best way to get good feedback from the full community. So we actually went through things a little bit differently. We met the community where they were at. We tabled at different events throughout the late winter and spring. We did outreach at bus stops. We actually talked to the riders on the service. We did an online survey. We also did that survey at bus stops and then at the tabling events. And then also, we talked to different community-based organizations. This slide says we talked to 18 organizations. That was kind of as the cutoff date of the end of that phase, but we are continuously talking to different organizations throughout the community. So organizations that serve seniors and youth and refugees and people with disabilities and different types of organizations so we can kind of find out where we need to talk to people and what kind of needs we might be missing. We also presented to the City Council here as well as met with Renton technical staff on a regular basis. One of the big outreach and engagement activities we did for this process was convening a mobility board. So this was a group of people that live in the area that we selected to be on a board. There were about 25 of them. We paid them for their time so that we could make sure that we were being respectful of their needs. We talked to them for about nine hours over two days. We kind of taught them how to be service planners, and then we kind of laid out some of the trade-offs that we are facing with our limited resources and used that group of writers and people with different needs throughout the area to really figure out where we should be prioritizing. It's one thing to hear the laundry list of needs, but we obviously know that some, we won't necessarily be able to meet all of them. So this group was really used to help us hone in on what some of those priorities should be. That also, the last thing we did was convened a partner review board. And that was made up of kind of jurisdictional staff in some major institutions so that we could kind of bring all of the information we heard through all these other tools and then just make sure that we hadn't missed anything. So the City of Renton was represented on that board and will continue to be a part of that process. So from all of that and all of these ways that we engaged, what did we hear? So some of the major themes we heard, which shouldn't really be a surprise to most and not necessarily a surprise to us at Metro, was there's a lot of people that want more service, more frequency, later at night, better on weekends. Some more specific things that we heard were better access and coverage in the Renton-Hi... Highlands, that came up quite frequently from many sources throughout this process. And then also east-west connections, especially in the southern half of the city of Renton. So some of these we heard in multiple different ways, and then how we incorporate that in the current phase we're doing is what do those mobility solutions that we have in our toolboxes, how can they best address some of these concerns that we've heard? So that's what we're doing right now, is sharpening our pencils and looking at how we can hopefully meet some of these needs that we've been hearing. Some of the other things we heard is that the Rapid Ride investment should make sure that it's going to the highest, most important destinations and serving those regional transit centers. The Rapid Ride I-line is anticipated to serve the Auburn Transit Center and Sounder Station, the Kent Transit Center and Sounder Station, the Valley Medical Center, the South Renton Transit Center, and the Renton Transit Center at this point in the planning. So that was a key theme that we heard, that the Rapid Ride service, that higher frequency, more show-up-and-go sort of service should make sure that it's going to those important transfer points. And then the last key thing that we put here is that we continue to prioritize and engage historically underserved populations. So that work, the continuous work we are doing to reach out to community-based organizations on how to reach different populations, and also using them to learn when events they might be hosting that we could tag along to as well. So with that, we are in another round of outreach and engagement. We've been out in full force the last month or so, we were at Renton River Days where we talked to quite a few people, it was a beautiful weather for that, so there was really good attendance, and a lot of people stopped by our booths, which was really great. And then we have a few other engagement activities we've been doing throughout the area. We also have an open house right now, an online open house. So there is a website at the bottom of the slide, and it's out on our website, and we've been trying to spread it through news medias and whatnot, but we do have an online survey right now for both capital elements of the Rapid Ride I-line, as well as potential concepts for change from the mobility plan. And then towards the end of this summer, we will reconvene that mobility board so that we can talk to that group again and say, hey, here's what we used with the information you gave us in round one, here's some of the concepts that we are presenting to at these outreach events and on this online platform, and then being able to use that group to kind of further vet those options. And then finally, after the mobility board, reconvening that partner review board, just to make sure that we hadn't missed anything critical, or there weren't some other fatal flaws that we might have missed from a technical lens. And that was it for my portion of the presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to Malva to talk about the King County Council Proviso.
Good afternoon, thank you for your attention. I know this is a lot to absorb. We've been doing lots of work in Renton. What I'm going to discuss is the Renton Transit Access Study. This is a King County Council Proviso sponsored by Councilmember Up the Grove as part of the 2019 and '20 budget. This is a study, and it is due to the King County Council on October 1st. We're finalizing the study report now and getting set up for our internal review process prior to transmitting it to the county council, so you are getting a sneak peek at it. We've worked in really close collaboration with city staff throughout this process from late February till now. For each step in the process, there was a workshop before moving to the next step, and we really appreciate the city's time and attention while they were also actively engaged in the other projects you've been hearing about. So I'm going to explain the process, how it fits into Metro's other work, and at a high level, some of the study's outcomes. Just as a reminder, this is a study over a short period. To take anything to a next step will require some deeper examination, and that can be done in conjunction with some of the other projects that you've heard about or separately. So I have seven more slides, and I'm going to be quick on some of them and linger a bit longer on others, particularly toward the end, because they're more about outcomes that I think you will be most interested in. But first, I want to define what is the Renton Transit Access Study. We studied barriers to using and reaching transit, then started to identify potential solutions. The city staff refined our focus areas, six focus areas to study that are shown on this map. Our approach to the study was to coordinate with Metro's service and capital projects that are going on in Renton so that they all complement each other. Our long-range plan, Metro Connects, and our mobility framework define access to transit as the ways that people get to fixed route services, so that can include infrastructure improvements as well as flexible or first mile-last mile connections. And that definition is consistent with Metro's previous plans and studies, PSRCs, and Sound Transit's access planning. So for this study, we looked at where improvements could be made for safety for people walking and biking, wayfinding, first and last mile connections, parking management, mobility hubs, and demand management. This slide looks a little intimidating, but it will help with some framing, I think. I mentioned that our approach was to coordinate with Metro's service projects. So this table represents Metro's overlapping transit projects in Renton. The blue column is the access study that I'm talking about now. The yellow columns are the transit service projects. The first two you've heard about more tonight, the area mobility plan and the Rapid Ride I-line, these are the active projects. The last column is a future restructure of Metro service that will affect Renton in time for ST's I-405 BRT line. All of these service projects, as you've heard earlier, will include fixed route transit, and the upcoming area mobility plan and the future BRT restructure include potential for flexible services where fixed route doesn't work as well. The Rapid Ride I-line, as you've heard from Greg, also will include some capital projects along its corridor to help with safe bike and walk access. This chart, this is a timeline that shows all four of those projects sort of stacked on top of each other, so you can see them over time, and thanks to city staff for recommending that we create this timeline to go along with the table you just saw, I won't go into the details. But again, this access study, which is the top blue row, has worked closely with the current service projects, and some of the study's results can be explored further through those projects or separately depending on the particular solution concept. To get more into the process, the study looked at existing conditions, current and future transit, and identified needs. As we look at other projects, we were consistent in evaluating needs based on equity, safety, access to destinations, current and future destinations, including future development, access to transit hubs, current and future, and feedback about barriers. We got feedback from the city, from the public, from community-based organizations, those last two were a part of the outreach we did with the service projects. For the sake of this particular study, we also added to that engagement process specific questions about barriers, and we made sure that that outreach extended beyond those service project boundaries to reach people throughout Renton.
Mr. President? May I?
I'm sorry.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, okay.
And thank you very much for the work that you have done, it's just fascinating, and thank you for the presentation. I think it is really interesting, the results, and more than anything, I'm really happy that you are including Highlands and Sunset and that you heard firsthand from our community. But I'm a little bit concerned, now that you're mentioning how important is equity and including people with different languages and race and ethnicity and income. When I see the six areas where you, I want to say this word, and I know that I'm going to pronounce it wrong, which is focus on six areas, hopefully I did a good job, in Renton, I'm a little bit concerned because one of our, we have two areas that I don't see in this map. One of them is on Fourth Street East. We have a large population of Asian-Americans, specifically Vietnamese, Filipino, and Indians, communities that culturally are not allowed and don't participate in this, but there in large volumes residents of Renton rise specifically there. And another area that is a major concern for me has always been Cascade and Benson. We also have strong minorities living in this area, specifically African-Americans and Hispanic community. And I just want to make sure that we are listening to those voices, even if they culturally don't participate on this, I don't know how you call it, outreach dynamics. I know that some of them never answer the phone, I know that some of them never, you know, open the door, but we know that they live there, and we know that they have needs. So I just want to bring to their attention what are we going to do to be able to provide services to them as well.
Thank you for raising that. Let me expand a little bit on the selection of these locations. The Proviso itself named specific locations, and the city helped us refine them for what the focus areas, the city staff helped us refine them to what the focus area should be for the study. And so we concentrate on those. The other areas, among the other areas that you are naming, they're included in the outreach in the other projects, the service projects, and so I don't think we will lose those voices, they're just, they just were not a particular focus of this study at this time. This was a fairly short turnaround, and it will evolve along with the other projects to hear more of the voices and the needs throughout the city of Renton.
Could you be more specific when you say the city provided it? Who coined the city providers?
The transportation staff.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, yeah, so if I could just ask a follow-up, I kind of had the same question, but I think you've answered it, but if we could just get a little more clarification? Because I did remember that Cascade Benson was part of the subject of a study by Metro for more service, and I think you're confirming that that's still the case, so.
It is.
And that was, I know that was a lengthy study and it was still ongoing, but I think what you're saying is, within that bigger study, there's been a more immediate look at some specific locations here. Do I understand that correctly?
I may get some more details from Jeremy as a service planner. The Renton Kent Auburn area mobility plan encompasses the Benson Hill area, and there's a community connections project that is part of that.
That's what I wanted you to confirm, that's what I remembered, and I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea about that, because I know there was, there's been a lot of investment in that, and that's continuing. So, I mean, I share Ms. Perez's a little bit of, you know, maybe not understanding how these focus areas compare to that, but honestly, I'm glad, any focus on service anywhere in Renton, I appreciate, so I don't mean to be down on these, I just wanted to make sure Cascade and Benson were covered.
I think Councilmember Person also had a comment, and I don't know if you want to get some more information from my colleagues, or have me finish up, and then we can put all the questions together.
I guess my comment is, is that we allocated 45 minutes to your presentation, and people are coming behind you, so you got a couple minutes to finish up, and I apologize for that, but we do our schedules based on what people say they're going to take, so.
Okay. Well, I want to get to things that I think you will particularly be interested in. I think I was up to this example in the Sunset Highlands area of how we evaluated, we used evaluation criteria related to equity, safety, access to destinations, yes, I did cover that topic. I think what I wanted to say here was the X's on this map are pedestrian and bike crashes over the last five years. And the color designations are related to our equity impact review, the pink is the highest percentage of people of color, low-income populations, and people with limited English. The green is in the middle, and the tan are lower percentages of those people. Let me jump to the solution concepts, I think you'll be interested in these, is it okay if I take a few more minutes?
You got a couple more minutes.
So we studied both near and long-term solutions for each area, including infrastructure and other ways to reach transit, and the report has recommendations for where these might work. Infrastructure improvements are generally fill sidewalk gaps, improve safety along corridors and at intersections, this is an example, in Rainier and Grady, the South Renton Transit Center. We looked also at other access strategies, and I'm going to jump then to the next slide because I think you'll be interested in this, flexible services and other access solutions, we looked at some concepts and where those might be recommended for further study, so some specific locations. And in the interest of time, maybe I won't go through these specific concepts, but we do have recommendations for what it would take to implement these strategies, and I'd be happy to come back and talk to you about those at another time.
I think that would be a good idea.
Here's an example of some longer, shorter and longer-term strategies to pursue of going to implementation and funding. So some of these you can see are just paint and posts. There's an example of a first mile-last mile on-demand connection using our, one of our pilot programs, this VIA or something in the future, and working with Metro and Sound Transit.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, yeah, I kind of figured this out too, so as you were speaking, so we have a community connections pilot, which is doing Cascade and Benson, and now that I look at your solutions, I think what this is focused on more is just immediate needs right around the existing transit where there's barriers and difficulties and accidents, and so I think we're, yeah, we work sort of, I was thinking about two different things.
Okay, and this is also looking at long-term needs as well?
Yeah.
Looking to the 2025 transit network.
Very good.
Okay, well, thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome, and we've got some next steps that we can.
And you're more than welcome to get with staff, and we can have you back.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next up is the King County Library System.
Good evening, Council President Person and members. Mary Jane Van Cleve, Recreation Neighborhoods Director. KCLS is with us tonight with a short and brief update on a new staff member that I think you'll be very interested to hear about as we move along with our continued value relationship with them. So I'm going to start off with Amy Egler, she's our regional manager, and then she'll introduce things that are going on with KCLS and their new member, Melissa Glenn. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Amy, and with me tonight, I am delighted to present our, you're not our first, but you are our only full-time social worker. Last year, the King County Library System, for our budget, approved a full-time social worker position to be based here in Renton. Melissa Glenn was hired and began back in April for us, which is a pretty short time, but the amount of work and progress she has made has been truly remarkable. Now, some folks look at me and say, why would you have a social worker in a library? What are you doing? And to that, I say, we're doing what libraries have always done and what we'll always do. We're serving our community, and really, at the end of the day, we're providing information and access to help, resources, and ideas. Anybody can and does every day walk into the library, they can ask us anything, and we're always going to do our level best to get them that answer. answer. What we've found in time is as our communities have changed and evolved and the challenges that they face, the needs, and some of the complexities of what goes into finding them the right answers has also changed. A great example was before Melissa started working with us, we had a woman coming in asking a variety of interesting questions. She was also completely deaf and very, it was challenging to communicate, and she would ask about, where do I get a free suitcase? How do I get bus tickets? A variety of questions that were challenging, and they appeared to be one thing on the surface, but as staff was working with her, they could tell something more was going on. Melissa came on board. They handed it off to her. It turns out this was a person looking to escape an abusive relationship and trying to secure housing in a different city. Melissa came on and within 48 hours had her on a bus lined up with housing and good to go, which was just something my staff can't do. So Melissa's here, she's hit the ground running, and she's going to tell you more about that. And what she's really done more than anything is really built on and expanded the partnerships that we already have in place with the city of Renton and the local service agencies. And she's just going to let you know a little bit more about what she's doing here.
Thank you for welcoming us. I provided a few handouts that I think you're looking over. The first sheet there is a flyer that we have posted in our KCLS library and other community locations to spread the word about the fact that there are social services at the library. And then you have two of my most recent monthly newsletters that I think give a great overview of the scope of work I've been doing and then how KCLS is utilizing my position. So to expand on that, I think it's easiest to talk about my work in three categories, the first being that I am working directly with patrons, as Amy described, do needs assessments with them, and then help them access resources. I am commonly asked about housing, shelter, employment, and basic needs. Meet with anyone in person or over the phone, getting a lot of referrals from community organizations in and outside of Renton and then surrounding libraries. And then a second exciting component of my job is working with KCLS staff, providing them with training around mental health, mental illness, de-escalation, how to provide trauma-informed and culturally responsive, sensitive services. I also do critical incident debriefings with staff and model how to engage with challenging patrons in the library, so I really enjoy all of that. And then thirdly, building community partnerships, as Amy mentioned. So I am on a few different maybe task forces or committees in Renton and in the South County to do training around resource events and housing, how to address homelessness in our community. And then most recently have been in conversation with Renton PD and Human Services around how we can share information and resources and what type of training I might be offered to city staff since we are working with a lot of the same community members. Do you have questions for us about the position? What are we doing? What does it look like?
Yeah, we want to let you know we're here and what we're doing and answer any questions.
Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, so are you located in the downtown library typically?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm down there 40 hours a week, meeting with patrons, working with staff.
I'd just like to say I'm really excited about this. I appreciate you're doing this, and it seems like a great program, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'm really enjoying it.
My question is, I like this, what you're doing. I think it's all, having been in the library, I think it's well-needed there. Most likely, that's most likely why you picked the Renton Library to start with, but it's a wonderful program. But how was the interaction of, with the other help groups and going? Because this is my opinion, we have a whole bunch of people that are very well-intentioned and attacking, but sometimes when they're not all talking together so that we don't get the best use of our charity dollars and the resource. So are you finding it difficult to get everybody together, or is this really a come-together situation?
How are we collaborating?
Mm-hmm.
On a few different levels. I do a lot of independent outreach to other local providers, letting them know that I'm here, meeting with their leaders, and talking about how we can be making cross-referrals, also finding out what resources they already have so that we're not duplicating efforts. And then there are several Renton provider meetings and South King County provider meetings that take place on a monthly or every other month basis, where many of us get in the room and give program updates and then talk again about how we can be providing cross-referrals in hopes of not duplicating efforts but being able to specialize. I do experience some of what you are describing, though, in that we are not always communicating effectively or efficiently about how we can share resources. So I think that's a common goal and something that is always being discussed.
Thank you. Any other questions from everybody?
No, if I may add, just again, I think this is a great idea, and I'm just looking forward to see how it's going to work.
I do. Yeah, I mean, I think we're already seeing a lot of payoff. As you know, or as you may know, we see a lot of the same folks in the library every day, and we see how they're doing. We see their condition. We see it improve or falter, and having Melissa available as a resource, it's already made an impact. We've seen some of our regulars move along in a good way, you know, in a positive direction. So, yeah.
I'm happy to hear that. Well, Casey, thank you very much. That's really interesting.
Great. And you know, and you all always have a standing invitation to come on by, see what we're doing, sit in on a program, introduce it, say hi to Melissa, meet the folks, you know, anytime. You're always, always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We love to show off.
We do.
Great.
We do. Thank you.
Okay, the committee, the whole, is adjourned. We'll be back unless somebody has emerging issues to bring up. I forgot. Seeing them? Very adjourned.